From this on.
Frozen.
Mary Brand.
Frozen.
Dan Webb.
Present.
Scott Libby.
Frozen.
Andrew Lindsay.
Present.
Hey, everybody's here. Carrie.
Okay, thank you. And before we get started, I just, Dan, I believe this is your last meeting.
Yeah.
For serving on the board.
Thank you.
For your service.
Thank you very much.
The, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I was checking in Julie that I closed it. Yes, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. So, the minutes, I understand that we did get, I think, a change to that, but everyone should have seen the updated minutes. So do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt the updated minutes as on received today.
Okay, great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And then, all in favor? Okay, thank you. So the first item, Scott, any questions? Please?
All right, so the first item on the agenda tonight is the preliminary and final site plan for Highland Green is submitted a site plan for 1,264 panel solar array of Village Drive, tax back R04, lot 8.
Hi there, my name is Chris Boyager. I'm going to share the screen. It's nice to talk about high green solar array located at the intersection of Village Drive and Route 196. What, it's going to be located on lot C5. Couple of facts, it's a solar array revision energy we're working with to put it in. 1,264 panels, 733 kilowatts, located on lot C5. At previous discussions with staff, we shifted the entrance down to meet the recommended 250 foot site distance. We have contacted CMP, he has requested to see if we can get an alternate access going. We submitted it in April 28th. I just got a name last week. But it was the guy at the bottom of the total call, so we're still trying to work our way up to the correct person to talk to, but we're working on it, and if we can get something to work out, we will have that alternate access. But if it doesn't, we'll use the access that showed on the plan. So we're open to get an approval for both. After the completion of the array, we'll expect zero vehicles, except maybe once a month for maintenance. So very little traffic. As such, the island in Village Drive, we're going to keep it intact, and we won't have a left turn into the new entrance that's there. We'll make them come down now to where we've been, figure it out. This is the existing survey, the topo, the poles, the highway, the roads. This is the site plan for the array. We did update the plan as requested by staff to put a, an approval block. We want to make this a site overall site plan, so we showed the entire parcel. We added the notes. This is a one version of the access drive and some of the array. I will, the array will be fenced in. We will hold the 20 foot setback as buffer, undisturbed. We won't cut at all in there unless it's approved. This is an access profile. We did prefer to see the access up the hill a little bit. It made a little bit less of a cut, but it works, so, and it does meet the 250 site distance recommendation. We did have our landscape architect bear a landscape plan. We updated it once per staff comments. So this plan is slightly newer than the one you have in the application you submitted. Basically, we wanted to show the white fence. We did that, and we will try to rebuild or use the fence that's being taken out with the entrance. Plan is scheduled. Here's some pictures of the existing conditions. Last picture is the highway side, right is the Village Drive side. Left side is the bank that we're going to be cutting into. The right side shows the island, basically. This is a little bit newer picture in June, a little bit greener, but that's basically the landscaped area that we were talking about. This is the CMP access. It's basically a four wheeler trail right now. I just, we walked it, wanted to give you some pictures of it. This is the, actually the barn that's up the hill of the CMP right away, and then the DOT access drive across the street. And we're working with CMP to come into the site right between the two poles that you see on the left hand side. But we'll work with them to get the most economical, I believe. Pictures upstream and downstream of the entrance. Pictures of the solar array. Pictures of the perimeter fence. And that's basically all I had for my presentation on behalf of the answer question.
Great, thank you, Chris.
I don't have anything right now.
Anyone on this side?
I don't. So, Chris, with regard to the Route 196 trees that you're just going to leave, no cutting?
Yeah.
And are you saying you can come back before the board with regard to any cutting of that?
No, we, what we're saying, we're not going to cut at all.
Yeah.
Unless somebody says at revision that we absolutely need it for sun, then we'll come back and we'll do an inventory of all the trees and the setback, and we'll work with you to figure out which ones you can trim down.
Okay, and come back?
For now, we're saying no cutting whatsoever.
Right, and you come back to the board?
That's right.
Yeah.
I think we actually included as a condition that it would come back to the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, under conditioning.
Is it? Yeah. I didn't know which way it was going. Okay, I had nothing. No other question?
Question time, yeah?
How are they?
We start your public list public hearing right here, though.
No.
Yeah. Well then, I guess I'll ask my question. I've got a couple. So, the first one is about the CMP entrance. I noticed in the packet that there was an email from April noting that CMP itself wanted to have access from Village, better access in Village Drive to the pole that's going to have to be put in?
They did. They wanted the stuff put in so they could get access to the new pole.
Okay, which is in line with what we suggested for the access for this.
Absolutely.
So those, those two points seem like it should be able to happen and not have to go off of Village Drive.
We did suggest the safety. We'd like to combine that entrance and use it for the access as well as their maintenance. They were hoping they agree.
I mean, one of my concerns is, you know, I understand why you've come with both of them. My concern is that by giving approval to this road up the hill, the other option becomes less important, and it seems to be the one that we, as a town, and is, or at least as planning board, would prefer. And it seems, I mean, judging from the pictures, really is the most logical.
We completely agree on that the CMP side is the best side to access from. It's easier to get to, it's flatter. We're on board with doing it that way, but we just need CMP to agree. They didn't want to be hampered by having us get it from CMP to development, so that's what we have is watching.
And that new alternative drive, I haven't seen much on radius of turns. You're, you're going to be able to get it, the major wheel are in there?
I've taken a radius template and put it on, and it's tight between those two poles. So if that doesn't work, we're going to either go up the maintenance driveway or the barn driveway and cut across, or we'll go ahead of the poles and try to come in that way, but I, I like the, between the poles is the best option for us. So maybe I need to extend it a little longer so I get the truck in and then get hit to turn, but those, those are the options we're pursuing with the CMT.
Okay, but as far as the, this one you have up here, if you don't go through CMP, the radius for getting a truck up in that?
Oh, that, that can handle a track and trailer, right? That, that, yes.
Up that grade too?
Yes.
And speaking of grade, the only changes I see in the grade and the topography here are with this alternative. So where the solar panels are, there is not going to be any regrading.
They, talking with the solar guys, there is a way that's relatively flat. You don't really need to grub it and flatten it and make it all work. As long as the grade is reasonable, and maybe there may be a slope that we need to shave back a little bit, just to make the panels even, but beyond that, there shouldn't be much grading at all.
Because in, in some of the previous solar arrays that we, projects that we've looked at, we've initially, I think there were a lot of issues with the one out on on 24, no, 2. Yeah, 24, Bill, pretty area where they ended up doing a lot more grading than was shown in the plan. And there also was, and I, I couldn't find it, Sky or Julie, but I thought we had a condition in some of the more recent solar farms to about rubbing and grading and site work. That there would be like an additional condition to try to minimize that with, with additional town staff meetings. I couldn't, I couldn't, I didn't have the.
We have looked through some previous approvals and I don't remember.
Because I knew Nick Watley, who had been on with Solar Committee, had come in after a couple of those noting that they needed to be more of an oversight on that. And my one concern here is that the plants themselves that we would approve if we approved this show the, the given topography. So my expectation is that's what would stay unless a grading plan is provided.
The topography that we have, it's relatively flat on the right hand side of the lot. There's a vein right between where the text is on that plane that's slightly elevated, so that may need to be shaved in that area. But once you get below it, it's right back to a reasonable grade. So they'll have to do what they gotta do in the middle there, but on each side, it's relatively flat.
Kind of like to see what they have to do to do.
Well, the, the grades are something that really have to do much at all, but there may be a couple of areas that they need to.
So, in, as far as having the truck traffic and not, not this, that much point you can, there's no issues with that with?
No, after construction, like I said, there's going to be very little traffic.
I'm thinking about during construction.
During construction. I would see a problem coming in out that road. There's plenty of room, and curvices are fine. If we had to, we could put a flagger at the, our entrance, but we don't anticipate a problem.
Don't anticipate any U-turns, but?
No. Well, well, we're one in ahead time. They know how to get in and get out.
The the, the fence, you know, you show it on the plan, which is great because in the first plan, it didn't show the fence. And where the fence comes to the white fence I've taught, not the one that the road, this alternative road is going through. When it turns, it's probably looked like four or five sections that are turning up Village Drive. I, I can't tell from the plan because the, the existing tree stuff is I would expect that some, the, the, this goes up RV, so all this area beyond that is being cut, correct?
So, right, basically, right now, that green tree line that you see, that's the setback we have to respect, and then on the, the blue line, that's where the tree line is now. That's where the DOT has cut to. They cut to their line.
The blue line where?
And the red existing fence is that white fence that you're talking about.
I can't remember exactly, because it wasn't in my notes, but I was hoping we'd have a, a site walk. I didn't bring it up when I saw this, but to see kind of where those trees are, to get a better handle, but now that we're not going to be cutting them, it means it's less important to us. So, I think it is. I think that was all I had. You want to?
Any follow up questions? What are you using, I may, for lay down area? Is that the, the kind of red outline type area or?
The lay down here, you see that black line? Basically, I can see it better on the flyer.
Oh, black dotted line?
Sure. Basically, that box, you see, that's going to be our lay down area.
Which one?
The end of that road, and if you can see, there's a black solid line running right through the array.
Yeah.
That's our lay down area to the right. If that makes sense.
So the lay down area is where the, half the solar panels are?
Yes, yes, and they'll back it. No, basically, the fence will go in last, and they'll build up from the bottom up, and then they'll back, they'll back each other out, however you like, so. They'll use a temporary storage.
That was one of the questions.
Because usually, usually it seems like they put all the posts in first.
They do, but they told me that they can work with the gravel area that we have on each side, and that area there, but they didn't work.
Okay. Yeah, I've been watching them go up in Augusta on the M6.
Yes.
And all the racks are going in first, and then the panels are going, so.
Maybe, maybe they need to take two sections and not build there until they're done with the boundaries, and then they'll, they'll back to it, so.
What's your, what's the timeframe for revision wanting to start this?
If we get approvals tonight, we'll, we'll get it on the schedule and we'll get cracking soon as we can. Oh, I know their exact schedule, but I know they want to get going.
Is the CMP study associated with this, or?
CMP has initially approved the array.
Okay.
We need to work through the access questions with them, but beyond that, hopefully it's pretty streamlined.
But as far as the interconnection study part of it, that's been?
Yes, they've approved the array itself.
Okay, so.
But that seems like another great mark, soon. CMP wants access to put their pole in. We want access, the access drive up there. It's already got the interconnected agreement.
We had site walk two months ago, and they still have not done anything that, so, just kind of waiting for that.
You know, we've had a number of projects come in here that have been approved, and, and they haven't even gotten their connectivity, so you guys are way ahead of that.
Yeah, well, we haven't, we started that before we submitted.
Would it make sense to add a condition that if CMP denies that entrance through the easement, then they can, then isn't going to be approved?
I would, I would prefer that. As opposed to approving, proving both, and then it's just going to open the ether for us.
I'd have to for it to be a condition as long as it's approved, and then, you know, come back, I would say. Because we do want to do that access again, better access.
We thought so, man. I mean, that seems, seems reasonable. I think it gets us closer to where we want to be. And it kind of helps work with the applicant, understanding some of the hurdles there with the central main power. It seems to me that it's probably going to go in the direction that everyone believes it should go. So, but having a condition, prioritizing that would make sense to me.
You busy writing one, Larry? You get some back?
I'm thinking first.
I, I did have one other question. We're about, your waiver asks to for us to waive all of 17510? Or everything except the, I mean, we have that, I mean, one of the key parts of 17510 is that 80, 80%, 50% if you do an inventory. And we're not really waiving that because we're including that as a condition. What part of it are, are we being asked to waive, just to have a?
For me, the focus was, let's landscape the entrance and focus on that. We weren't going through every line of that section of the code, saying, I need 25 trees here and 14 trees there. We didn't go through that. We were just hoping that if we got a waiver and we landscape the entrance, that would be enough.
And 27 is good with weaving that as long as we have that condition above 196, right?
And I'm assuming there's a condition, standard condition, preconstruction meeting? Yeah, sort of, preconstruction site walk or something of that nature? Back the review.
Yeah, Mary, my, my only concern there, still remember, brings back to the, you know, the grugging, the grading.
Right.
And, and that if we can add another condition that focuses on a
Yeah.
onsite meeting to?
Onsite staff meeting in particular, after tree planting, before grating.
Yeah. Before grating and grating.
Just so it's clear what's at that point, I would think they could, you know, get everything clear. Have a good indication of where the minor grading needs to happen.
And we assumed it was all graded in the counts, so if it had to be graded and restripped as low, we can do that if we're at the cap release. We're going to minimize it as much as we can. And if we don't have to grow, I'm glad we don't have to.
Yeah.
Were you grugging?
I just wrote grugging, grading, meeting. But I, I've got to gavel my hands for not to make a motion.
You have a pen in here?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll see if this, if, if this condition works for people before we or condition 13. Approvals for the access to be through CMP corridor. If CMP denies access and the applicant provides that denial writing to the planning department, then access can be made off Village Drive and shown on the approved plan. Okay. All right, but what you want to say, I would write, so those payments can do the grugging.
The, so, you know, something similar to condition nine, so a maybe it gets added to condition that as, as far as, it says a precondition, a preconstruction complex will be held.
Yeah.
And then in addition, a site meeting of said town staff and developers.
Posts, like post tree?
Posts, post clearing OBL to determine extent of grugging and grading of the site prior to construction. And I don't know if we have to add something in there to provide said town staff authority to, you know, approve. In some way.
Yeah, maybe so. CEO.
CEO, yeah.
Right, because there's no proposed contours other than the limited area up there, so. Is there any language in the application about although there's no contour shown, but any fine grading or minor changes to topography? So again, I guess what we're, we're proving is the existing topography, so if it changes, it's going to be something that's to
Right, it's something to be taken.
And, and maybe if it's just minor tweaks, it's a minimalist type of thing that code enforcement officer staff can, can address.
And if the code enforcement, excuse me, code enforcement officer feels that it's beyond that?
Yeah.
Come back.
Take that.
Because that's what we would have wanted to see anyway. This, this is a grading plan, that's part of what was done, I think. That's what we've, we've got in the past, yeah.
You tell them to do a grading plan if that is what's required when we see it in the bill.
Okay. How's that looking, Larry?
So if I add this to condition nine, to say, on our post clearing, a site meeting will be held to address any grugging and any proposed contour changes from that shown on the approved plan.
Yeah.
Changes, changes to be reviewed by the CM, well?
CEO.
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 Code enforcement officer.
Oh, yeah. Financial.
Yeah, keeping in line with the minimal extent presented in the book or at the meeting. Or return planning board approval instead of grade. You scribble?
Let me read the whole thing. Sure. So add it to number nine. Post clearing, the site meeting will be held to address any grugging, any proposed contour changes from that shown on the approved plan. Any changes to be reviewed by the code enforcement officer to determine the minimal and keeping in line with the approved plan. Significant changes will require planning board approval. I think that's good. All right. So do we first have a motion on the waiver?
Number one.
Oh, number one. All right, if that's a first motion?
Yeah. We need to start doing that again.
Okay, go ahead. I move the planning board concurrence to staff's conclusion that the final site plan application materials have been submitted, and the application is complete, such that the board may proceed with substantive review of the application and identification and further information required in the application.
Do I have a second?
Same.
All in favor? All in favor?
We have any further information from the applicant? Then I'll go to motion, second motion, where I move the requested waiver. For section one seventy-five dash ten, additional landscaping standards is approved in accordance with the staff memo. Made to June twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Anyone have a second? Who can second it? All in favor? Host, show unanimous?
And moving on, I move final site plan review application for Island Green Solar Farm tax map R zero four. Lot eighteen makes the applicable standards in the site plan review ordinance, chapter one seventy-five. And the zoning ordinance, chapter two twenty-five. Including the specific performance standards for solar energy conversion systems. And is approved with the staff recommended conditions and findings identified in the staff memo dated June twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. With the addition to. Condition number nine, which. There's an addition to that, saying post-clearing, a site meeting will be held. To address any rubbing and any proposed contour changes from those shown on the approved plan. Any changes are to be reviewed by the code enforcement officer to determine their minimal in nature. And keep, in, keeping in line with the approved plan. Significant changes will require planning board approval. Also adding condition number thirteen. That approval there is for the access to be through CMP corridor. If CMP denies access and the applicant provides that denial of writing to the planning department. Then access can be made off Village Drive as shown on the approved plan.
Also in that second, all right, any discussion? All in favor? Post, again, unanimous. All right, very impressed. And we move on to the next agenda.
Uh, adding, are you going to require? Those additions and writing convenient.
I have the tape, so I'll listen.
You give it that.
Thank you, Larry.
She can read my writing, she can read yours. It's all, and it's all. Walk.
That and the tape will work.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, the next item, uh, sketch subdivision Stonewall Investments LLC has submitted proposal for phase three. With thirty-eight new lots at Raspberry Lane, tax map R one. Lot nineteen, tax map R five, lot fifty. So please identify yourself and we'll get started.
Sure, I go mark the sight lines here on behalf of Stonewall Investments. Um, so just jump right into it, um, so. Uh, the third phase of projects is going to consist of a total of thirty-two. Uh, additional units, uh, thirty-seven of those are proposed to be single-family. And one of those can be a multifamily, that's the one, uh, in East Road. Uh, right now shown as a kind of a duplex, uh, townhouse style development. Um, I'm still working to determine exactly how many units that law will report, but. It's somewhere between twelve and fourteen, so we're showing six, two, you know, buildings. Um, so right now, um, if you recall, um, the subdivision comes down off Rocky Ave Extension. Turns over into Raspberry Lane and extends. Um, about halfway towards, uh, Loser Grove, so this, uh, next phase will. Consist of extending that Raspberry Lane to connect in Loser Road and then also be a loop road that. Um, connects back from Raspberry Lane back to the Rocky Ave Extension. Um, and they'll get additional, uh, subdivision road in between there as well. Um, there will be some wetland impacts, um. Done as part of this project, I think right now we're estimating somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand square feet of wetland impacts that will, will require D E permit. Um, there are no stream crossings, there are some streams present, um, on the project, but we are avoiding those for the roads. Uh, and mostly it's the residential lots that are, we'll just be backing up towards those, those streams. Um, there's no public water sewer out there, so it's all gonna be on, uh, well and septic. Um, the trickiest part of that for, for us is finding a adequate space on that, um. Multifamily lot to accommodate all of the septic and systems and wells. Um, see, um. I know one of the comments we had at the staff meeting was about, um. Fire and making sure they have adequate, um, water out there. So I've got to coordinate with them to determine if they need a system out there or if they can accommodate, but it just. Um, all the water to the site, so that has not yet been determined. We anticipate that, so we're showing, like I said, thirty-eight lots at this time. We'll probably lose a few of those during the design process to accommodate stormwater systems. Things of that nature. Uh, we're working right now, just trying to figure exactly where those ponds are gonna be, um. But we would anticipate probably losing one or two lots, um, to accommodate that. Uh, that gives answering questions or have, um, I will say. You know, any input the board have at this stage would be great, because, you know, we're really a, a, a stage of the project where we can make some provisions to, uh. Comedy any concerns or questions for the chat.
So. Yeah, I had just a couple of things, I don't, maybe you guys could help me recall, um. Seems like this is the one we had pictured the curve walking down under some river. Looking at the culvert, there, there's a number of discussions in regards to. Uh, drainage, potential impact to some of the existing structures. Um, as well as, uh, what that meant to the culvert and that, I'll call it. Probably miscor, or incorrectly, uh, kind of a watershed going in that direction. Uh, so if you don't mind kind of addressing drainage and. If there's, if you had any experience with any issues that some people were concerned about, when I say that's some of them. In the public hearing, um, the other concern was, um, I think about traffic. And it wasn't necessarily. In the community as much as it was getting on and off Loser Road, right, and. I don't know that, again, whether there's been any. Look at that as to what the, I'll call it, the first phases. Whether there's been any impact or any issues or anything identified, uh, from that, so. That would be a couple of my thoughts on this, Scott.
Yeah, I mean, the first one was, um, remembering back about the culvert and, um, underneath, I think it's underneath the railroad.
Right.
Bridge down below, that was one of the big issues, like. I, I can't remember, like, during the sub, that was part of the subdivision plan.
Right.
And. Can't remember if we had an estimate of the number of units at that time, there must have been something. Associated with potential number of units and that if, if, uh, they were doing a. It's some kind of modeling of what the runoff would be, et cetera, um. It strikes me as, I'm glad you said there may be a few less units to accommodate the stormwater ponds and things. Seems like a lot, it seems like more units than I remember seeing in the original, the original wasn't a full book plan, but.
It, it seems like more than I expected too, and, and not, it's not. It's not saying this isn't something that could work, it's just.
Yeah.
I, I'm coming on. Those meetings, when we reviewed it and the pictures and everything else, there's just a lot of discussion about drainage, right, and so, I guess.
And, and associated with that, I think, you know, um, peer reviewers, I think, I assume Tom. It provided some of his input, um, one of his points was saying about, note of the impact areas on lots sixteen, seventeen. Um, but it seemed like a lot of the lots have a bit of, uh, you know. Within that shore, look shores of area of, of the stream that the wetlands open to the, yeah, to the south. But, yeah, I mean, I think it's good, the, the way the layout has happened, that it's not. Directly crossing streams with the roads, but, uh, I don't know. If within the stream bumper in many of those lots.
Most of the lots, yeah.
So the actual buildable portion of some of those lots is pretty, pretty small.
One thing about those stream setbacks, so, you know, if you're doing a general subdivision project or end project. The normal setback room is three to seventy-five feet. Uh, when you go to site lock, you're required to send a letter to, uh, Van, uh, I F N W. And they are always gonna route the setback and. Usually we go through the D E P for these permits here, we go through the town, but either way. We have to then accommodate the hundred foot setbacks, so all those setbacks shown there from the stream are higher than the, rather than to the seventy-five. So there's some further protection for those.
So I get that, that would be kind of mine, but that would be, if you could help us understand that a little bit better. And what the implication is, and, and I agree with you, uh, how many units do you think you're gonna end up with? Certainly we all, I think, believe we could use more, more homes, right, so, um.
I do have a question, but the hatch blocks. It's kind of the middle. Yeah, in, up to the sidewalk, I guess part of the stormwater.
Buffers that were proposed as part of the original phase one. Yeah, so those will remain, um, if we took those away, we'd have to then treat those lots.
And so similarly, like with the next round, we'll have. Some more buffers, some more stormwater ponds perhaps.
Yeah, there'll probably be some buffers, I, I guess is the way this is gonna lay out, most of those lots are gonna end up going to, um. Stormwater basins, treatment basins, so it won't be probably as many buffers, um. But we'll see as we get through the design process for that. Oh, I, I can talk to the drainage part in a little bit, so. The watershed is there, most, mostly does all drain down to that one, um, culvert that, that, um, Kurt had talked about. So the first two phases, we were in pretty much, um. Because of large watershed, we can say we're only doing, I think it was ten lots with the two phases. With those ten lots and a little bit of road, we are not impacting that, um. Peak runoff rate at that, because you have such a large water jet, adding a little bit of burghess is not a big deal. When you go forward with this whole build out, we're gonna have to put in some stormwater basins that hold back that peak. Um, so we do have that modeled pretty well right now, so we're just gonna put in the new roads, the new lots. Uh, to see, all right, you know, how big do these storm?
So the stormwater ponds the public works talks about, um. Is certainly gonna be integral with that discussion.
Yeah, yeah, and those will be, um, outside the right away, those will be owned by the, or maintained by the HOA. Um, I'm not sure exactly how tall, you know, there would probably be an easement to the town as well, so if they. HOA refuses to maintain them, then the town can hopefully go in there, maintain them in charge of the HOA.
There was some discussion in your, okay, it's far too, that makes sense. Do the location, might need some systems as well.
Yeah.
Back this briefly, I know you're still figuring out that section of well, but where you have the. I call it the multi, um. I take it you're looking at duplexes because of the density?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's for now, that was going to remain as just kind of one block of, of land, I guess, one block of land, but it might be at some point in the future where those. Duplexes are turned into condos and sold as separate, um, units, but for now it's just gonna be a regular units for. Um, and with your own question about the access on the Loser Road, we have looked at that, um. At first flush, and, you know, you, you do have site distance, I decide that kind of coming down, right, and Loser Road is, is coming down, uh, towards, toward Lisbon. Um, and. Um, I think Dennis said that that would not require a separate, um, T O T entrance permit as, so within the compact zone, so. Uh, we'll confirm that, yes, well, for a process.
Uh, you have anything else?
Um, I, just one other question, you, you brought up the HOA and controlling the stormwater, sorry. Do they, would they also control that, the large lot that is the main stream? Is that gonna be HOA or is there, how does that, what does that, what does that?
That will, that'll be part of the overall HOA, yes, they'll probably have their own separate stormwater thing, but it will all be pooled as one, one combined HOA.
Does, does this trigger any, like, in lieu of or conservation?
It would, yeah.
Yeah, open space, a good space, yeah. Yeah, because right now there's no recreation area proposed for this, so we'd have to pay that. Unless it's sort of, it would be recreation, the stormwater ponds would be recreation.
You're not trying to sell us something.
We had one where we built it up in Sydney and there's a big stormwater pond named, it felt like a playground in it. So I never been there, a big rainstorm, I guess I would anchor down, but still.
So Andy or Larry or Ron, any thoughts or questions?
Um, did you say that it's not served by public water?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure where it ends, but it's, it's, okay, we're not sending it this long.
Oh, water's back there on, uh.
I'm in home, I've. Yeah.
Any.
Right next door. Thought of bringing water over.
Um, I know who brought up at the staff meeting, I, I didn't think they said it was available in there, but I could. Yeah, check that again as well.
The, the identical neighborhood does public water. That affects that property.
I think if you could achieve that, that'd be great. I mean, just looking at the sizable lots.
Well, the size of the lots, yeah, the potential, um. Uh, desirability of the slots up there, served by public water, I would think it'd be easier to sell.
Especially. You'd like to go right away there, the Jersey Circle, come right on to. Onto that, that piece of property.
Anything else, Dan?
That was where I was going.
You got it? All right, anything else for us, staff? All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh, item E, election of officers. We have a motion or a nominee.
If I nominate Patty, we are the reporting secretary.
I don't think we have to take a vote on that.
I nominate, uh, Dawn as chair of the planning board and Scott as the vice chair.
Okay, second, are you okay? Uh, any discussion? I think then I'll vote for Scott, but I'll stand on myself, all in favor?
What would you say?
Okay, thank you. All right, yeah.
Vote for yourself.
Again, thank you, Dan.
I wanna hold the gavel so I don't have to write them.
Thank you, Dan, and you said Tim Dunham, the, the board selectman. And so Tim Dunham, he's a local realtor. Uh, he's been on our board before.
Yeah, I'm saying, he's been on the board before.
Right, it's, um, just, yeah, his interview. Every next meeting, all right.
Do you mind any moves of, you know, him?
Okay. Well, you've gone around a few more moons than I have, so that's. All right, um. Before we adjourn, anything else we need to discuss or?
Just wanted to make sure, didn't need to be official.
Motion to adjourn?
So, seconded.